I'm now herself. It's seven o'clock. I call this February twelfth, two thousand and eighteen meeting. Word. Keep us all in grace and good health. Keep us on the path of righteousness. Amen.
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reading of the.
January eighth, two thousand and eighteen, the Board of Alderman present Rene Edwards, Rick Winter, Doc Crickser, Delmer Strange, and Ryan Mason, absent none. Mayor Hewnault called the meeting to order and gave the invocation. The pledge of allegiance was recited. Minutes of the December thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen meeting were read and approved with one correction. Ryan Mason, rather than Ryan Bishop, made the second to amend the budget. Motion was made by Delmer Strange and seconded by Rene Edwards to pay all bills as presented. Motion carried unanimously. Under citizen comments, there were none. Department reports, Joe Demmett, superintendent of utilities, met with the board. He reported that the newest employee, Todd Stoll, has started work and is doing a good job for the city. Joe presented a copy of Mike Wright's monthly report for the wastewater treatment facility. The average daily flow for December was fifty-nine thousand gallons per day, which calculates out to twenty-seven percent of the design flow. He also said Mike would be proceeding with the UV project update that has been budgeted. Demmett reviewed the bids he received for a new tractor. He recommended the board accept the bid submitted by the farm shop in the. Thirty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars for a Massey Ferguson forty-seven oh eight. His needs and amount budgeted. The other bids were fifty-six thousand five hundred fifty-four sixty-two for a Case Farmall ninety C, submitted by Selby Implement, thirty-six thousand five hundred for a Kubota M seventy sixty, submitted by the farm shop, and a verbal quote from Cybber Stricker for forty-three thousand. Motion was made by Rene Edwards and seconded by Ryan Mason to accept the bid submitted by the farm shop for the Massey. Ryan Bishop, chief of police, met with the board. He gave the board a written report which included some of the calls the police department has responded to in the last month. He also updated the board about some of the routine maintenance on the police vehicles. Uh, unfinished business, none. New business? The city currently has local sales taxes at the rate of one percent and is authorized to impose a local use tax at a rate equal to the rate of the local sales taxes. The city use tax cannot become effective until approved by the voters. The city attorney prepared an ordinance at the board's request to put the local use tax issue on the April ballot. The first reading was at the December meeting. Motion was made by Doc Crickser for a second reading of bill number seven hundred, proposed ordinance number seven hundred by title only. Rick Winter seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously and Mayor Hewnault read bill number seven hundred by title only. Motion was made by Rene Edwards and seconded by Ryan Mason to adopt ordinance number seven hundred for the local use tax issue on the April ballot. Motion carried unanimously. Action regarding the unsightly building that is falling in on East Lafayette Street. Motion was made by Delmer Strange and seconded by Ryan Mason to adjourn. Motion carried. The meeting was adjourned.
That's what I remember.
So then if you recall, we had a special meeting January tenth. The Board of Alderman met in special session with Mayor Hewnault presiding. Alderman present Rene Edwards, Rick Winter, Doc Crickser, and Delmer Strange, absent none. Mayor Hewnault called the meeting to order and gave the invocation. The pledge of allegiance was recited. Mayor Hewnault said the special meeting was called to appoint Ryan Mason to fill an unexpired term in the Second Ward and address business that was conducted on January eighth prior to his appointment. Mayor Hewnault stated that Ryan Mason submitted December eleventh, two thousand and seventeen after the meeting, therefore should not have been seated at the table on Monday, January eighth. Mayor Hewnault said Ryan has moved to the Second Ward. Therefore, he recommended the appointment of Ryan Mason to fill the unexpired term of Ron Stansbury. Motion was made by Doc Crickser and seconded by Delmer Strange to approve the appointment of Ryan Mason as Second Ward Alderman. Motion carried unanimously and Mason was sworn in by the city clerk. The following action was taken by the newly formed board. Three bids for a tractor were reviewed. Motion was made by Rene Edwards and seconded by Ryan Mason to accept the bid of thirty-nine thousand eight hundred submitted by the farm shop for a Massey Ferguson forty-seven oh eight. Motion carried unanimously. Mayor said the city currently has local sales taxes at the rate of one percent and is off rate equal to the rate of the local sales taxes. The city use tax cannot become effective until approved by the voters. The city attorney prepared an ordinance at the board's request to put the local use tax issue on the April ballot and the first reading was at the December eleventh meeting. Motion was made by Doc Crickser and seconded by Delmer Strange for proposed ordinance number seven hundred to be read by type, be read the second time by title only. Motion carried and Mayor Hewnault read proposed ordinance number seven hundred by title only. Motion was made by Rene Edwards and seconded by Rick Winter to adopt ordinance number seven hundred to put the local use tax issue on the April ballot. Motion carried unanimously. Motion was made by Rick Winter and seconded by Ryan Mason to close a portion of the meeting pursuant to six one oh point oh two one subsection one, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving a public governmental body and any confidential or privileged communications between a public governmental body, board's representatives, and its attorneys. Motion carried unanimously and the meeting was closed. When the board returned to open session, Rene Edwards suggested that a date be selected for the employee's safety dinner meeting. Board agreed to schedule it for Friday, January twenty-sixth. Motion was made by Ryan Mason and seconded by Delmer Strange to adjourn. Motion carried. The meeting was adjourned.
Collections for January two thousand and eighteen. Water nineteen thousand one hundred forty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents. Sewer twenty thousand seven hundred seventy-one dollars and forty-nine cents. Sanitation fourteen thousand four hundred sixty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. Seventy-one dollars and ninety-three cents. Recreation two hundred seventy-four dollars and twenty cents. Streets twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Special lights. Three hundred ninety-seven dollars and three cents. Meter deposits two hundred and forty dollars. Reserve and improvement fund four thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty-six cents for a total collected of sixty-eight thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents. I also wanted to let you know that as of January thirty-first, we've collected ninety-two percent of the real estate tax and eighty-seven percent of the personal.
Any questions? Thanks, Karen. Treasury report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't have anything special for you tonight, so everything's pretty routine unless you've got questions. I'll let you move on then.
Thank you. Month of bills. Does anybody have a chance to go into that?
I have just one. So that's our policy that we have the accident policy on the rescue rescue squad. Yeah, but it says sixteen. Did they have sixteen calls?
Sixteen calls.
Are there certain charges per call there or something?
The insurance company always had a flat rate and then they always ask how many calls. And so I always contact line banks.
Okay.
Same thing with the fire department. How many calls we have.
Okay.
And of course, as you can see, the biggest part of the cost is the base rate.
Right.
Per call thing is not very much. Doesn't matter if you have two calls.
Yes.
Fifty calls, it's not too much to hate for.
Okay.
Any other questions?
There's one on the tractor, I think, three hundred dollars.
Right. That was, uh, well, yeah, it was here. Uh, it was covered under warranty, but we had to get the truck down there for them to take care of it. And so it was either us have somebody pay him to go down and back and everything, or they would have to do it.
That was cheaper.
Yeah, so that was.
It was cheaper than a motel room library.
Yeah.
Thank both.
Any other questions? The bills will stick out in line.
I had one here from Farm and Home for a hundred and fifty dollars for painting.
Oh, that was.
In the building?
Inside. It was painting down in the city barn, like in the office and such.
Yeah, it was tip more than this thing. Who would add the Kils? And it was Kils, you bought Kils probably based primer.
I've just based white interior paint.
Okay.
So I could figure to do it.
Was it the Kils paint with it though? Did it say?
No, it's the interior.
It was just an interior white paint. It took two coats on it.
So they used it all? I mean, if they did their job?
Yeah, it was. Some touch up if you really wanted to run a few things, but yes, it's painted and looks much better in there.
Line decks and getting dirty.
Oh, that's.
It's every.
There was a line deck, just line decks. So. More presentable. Any other questions?
I haven't got any more.
All right, we'll move on to citizens' comments while we finish looking through the bills. No. We'll move on to citizens' comments while we finish looking through the bills. Not yet. You're on that topic.
Um, the tenth. We would love for you guys to get a team together and come and participate at the community center. Um, doors open at six. The event starts at seven.
March tenth.
Yes, sir. It's a Saturday.
What time?
Uh, doors open at six and then the tournament will start at seven.
All ready? Any other comments? We'll go ahead and we'll move on to Warren Lewis Claire, Knox County Health Department Administrator. Application for picnic license for wine test tasting event, March third at Knox County.
So the first part is just me as a citizen. Um, requesting a picnic license for the local cancer fund. We were donated several cases of wine to have with an event of some sort as a fundraiser um, in honor of Greg Gonnerman's mother, Betty Jo. Um, he brought it here from Arizona, New Mexico, wherever he lives. And um, so we need a picnic license to be able to give samples of that. And uh, we've investigated it thoroughly. Margaret helped me. And then I called down to alcohol, tobacco, and firearms to make sure we knew what we needed to do. And essentially, as long as I'm just taking donations and letting people sample that product, what I'll do is I'll make sure everybody's stamped that they're twenty-one and over and then I'll be at a table and everybody pour their own, come up to the table and get their own samples, so.
So will the application be Knox County Health Department?
Knox County Local Cancer Fund.
Okay, Cancer Fund, okay.
Knox County Local Cancer Fund. All proceeds to that group.
Okay. And that's March the third. So, yeah, we need a motion.
I'll take the second.
And your second.
All in favor? Everybody?
Part two. You all received a letter from us and Eric's been down and your maintenance guys were down this week. I have no idea what they found, but I found they did painted, looked like they would be inspected thoroughly. Um. I don't know where we need to go from here, but I'm really just looking for an annual obligation. But we need, I need. We've got a lot of utilities there. Um, we've had some major drainage issues down that way. Um, both on our side of the street and the other side of the street. So we just want to be sure when we do this that it's done appropriately and it carries the drainage and stops us from being flooded, stops the people across the street. Essentially, I don't know what I'm trying to bid. And I don't know, you know, what parts need to be in it, so I'm hoping between all of us, we can get it taken care of. And we did have an injury there. I've had a couple of car accidents there over the last year and we knew it was getting bad. And I've set on it because of our budget and set on it and then we had a pretty bad injury. So we've got to move forward now. Should have done it before.
Joe's went down and shot. Joe, do you want to come over? He's went down and shot elevation and stuff and he's kind of left it in his hands as far as that goes. Do you have all the elevation?
Basically, every green dot is a spot where we shot our elevations. We started with an elevation at the at your storm grain. And we shot your different elevations by your door. Across to your two spots right there and there and then across to here and then actually shot the elevations of the outgoing.
Okay.
And uh, you have fall. It doesn't, it doesn't appear to be. I was really surprised, but everything does go to the drain. It just doesn't go enough. You have six point six eight tenths of fall. Uh, a tenth is one point two inches, so essentially you have six inches of fall from your door to the grate. So if there's any moving water, that's the reason we're not getting it turned there. Uh, we got down inside the grate and we looked in it. It is actually in really good shape. It just needs some cleaning and.
Grate or the?
The storm grain itself. The, the line, it's filling. It doesn't appear to be from what we can shine in and look yet.
Then that was when I started with MoDOT. Um, because I really thought maybe they would come in and, and help us determine that. They told us that it wasn't their problem, but they had been through it and that whenever we did our parking lot, that needed to be redone because it was all broke up in the bottom and it was letting, basically heaving and sinking and.
Okay.
Now that was per, that was per the guy who was there last.
What I would like to do is get in here and run our gut through this when the weather is a little more cooperative. And see what we can, see if we can drag some of that silt out with our, with our sewer jet and then we can inspect it. It's thirty inch square concrete, uh, storm grain, as long as it's all good. But like I said, if we can get it cleaned and do a better inspection on it, I, I feel like we're okay there. Uh, you're, we need to work on this just a little bit. There's a high spot in your ditch right here to make this drain properly. And the ditch ahead of it could use a little attention here and there. But as for the actual structures themselves, I think they're pretty sound.
So basically.
Might not hurt to get a bigger intake when you do your parking lot, just a little something. The grate, because it's just a small. If we can find a way to put a bigger, make it, make it longer. You can't, you can only make it thirty inches wide because your, your box cove is only thirty inches wide. But if we can make it thirty inches, but you know.
How far is that from the open ditch?
The grate?
No.
Just to look pretty decent.
And then we have some utilities, don't we?
Oh, yeah.
Is there, there's several utilities in there.
Yeah, there's going to be utilities in there. But you have, like I said, you have fall at all points in your deal. My recommendation is if, when we, when you do this, when you go forward with your parking lot, we will try and get this as absolute low as we can into the, into the storm grate. Because the more fall you have from here to here, obviously better. And if you get somebody in here that can put some form of a swell in the parking lot, so the parking lot's not flat like this table and there's something that anyway, it's got a way around. Because if it can get around here, it'll obviously go to here.
Fall to there. Okay.
You know, but.
So once we know if this thing is sound and doesn't, you don't, these don't need to stop by getting in it.
We'll, we'll jet it and then we'll, we'll send somebody down through it.
And you've sent Jason Bell through already?
He's one of the ladies into it and looked and what he seen looked fine. He didn't go clear through. But he went, he went in a little ways with a light and shine and he said it looked fine for what he could see now. I'm not saying, it does make a little bit of a turn in here, you know.
Well, you get a better look at it.
Yeah, we just need to get a better look at it.
So then I guess what I'm asking the city, if those parts are all okay and we don't need to replace those, what I'd like is your permission to have maybe your city superintendent help me write out a bid for what I need to do down there and then help me kind of just watch, make sure these guys do what they need to do to get in and around these drains and, and utilities.
Which, I mean, to some extent, the approach is we, we watch over that anyway, the culvers, because we don't, obviously don't want to pour and clean out the road because we can't replace our culvers.
Everything.
Comes there.
Comes to you. Everything.
Yeah, and that's, that is the reason that a year, about a year ago, Delmer, you remember me coming to your house and we got that heavy rain right after that city and superintendent came down because I was, I was listening to a podcast and heard um, the county commissioners talking about trying to divert more water that way. And I thought, well, that can't, that'll bring it in to a height, so um.
But sway in that, Joe, she's talking, you're talking about, will that be difficult for her people, her clients that come there?
Oh, no, no, I'm not going to.
You don't want to notice that much.
Just to gradually, I think it where everything goes away from the building. If you move.
Could you do like the one that's there and then do two more on each side of it to, so it didn't have to be as deep?
Of intakes?
Yes.
That would turn into a lot of work.
Okay.
Versus just making this, making the east part of the driveway as low as possible with, will help as much as anything because even if it can't take a major rain, at least it gives it a chance to get it away from the building. You know, it'll go across the parking lot.
Kind of like an overflow in the same.
Yeah.
When the state guy was there, he had also mentioned to me if I wanted like a backup, like a backup from even this out here, we could do some sort of drain right in front that hit and carried away if it got that far. Is that doable or is that?
That could be something you could have put into your parking lot and, uh, yeah, they could, they could put a couple, they could put a couple in front of your building and trunk line it into this. The only problem with that is, is hard. It will go to the least resistance.
Bubble it up.
Water will go to its least resistance and that may mean it pushes out in front of your building again. And then we're right back at the same issue.
Okay. Well, so.
Are your plans to just resurface the parking lot or?
Everything's gonna like, yeah.
That's big talk.
Yeah, we're gonna tear everything clear out and, I mean, I've heard, I've, I've read and I'm not, I would ask you, I guess. I've been told that concrete is the best way to go if I want no maintenance and don't want to have to worry about keeping things up. Um, but asphalt will be cheaper.
Probably.
But saying that, and I.
If you have a leak, it's a lot harder to dig up, right?
Concrete.
Concrete.
Yeah.
So.
I'm not sure where.
Hundred percent. If you're going concrete, we need to make sure we're a hundred percent on our end.
Yes, so just done some of the math on a thirty inch cove and it's all kind of at the top of the math, but if, if your water, if your line is full and your water's moving at, at two feet per second, which is, you know, a hard flow, at two feet per second, it's discharging twenty-one thousand gallons a minute of water out the end of it. So it will handle a large amount of water, but.
We've watched kind of catty corner there. We had a, well, we knew the woman who lived on the corner and we can even see kind of when it backs up or when it gets real heavy. You can see how it's washed it out around that edge that you guys have had about as many cars go off in that as we have the help department ditch where we put that sign at. But you know, and when we're doing this, even if we can. My big concern was I didn't want somebody who didn't know what they were doing coming in there and slowing that down any because I thought it would just take that out probably.
I think clean and inspection. I think it'll do what it's, I think, but I think it will handle. You know, I mean, it's not going to handle just a, an, you know, crazy rain. It might get away from it then, but it gets away from everything at that point, you know.
But even pushing it back this way a little bit would help.
It would, it would just, if you're just given a chance to go this way. It just needs, because what comes off the road is what we're having to deal with getting to your building. Now, it's not, it's not boiling up out of the grate under a hard grain, is it? That you've noticed before, is it some?
I think it's backing, like it looked to me like.
So see, a lot of it that I, from what I've seen, looked like, we've got to get the runoff, the water coming off the highway and into your entrances that's not making it to the ditches. Because we've got to give it a way to get across your parking lot. And right now it's high, high, low. So that's, you know, if we could just, if we could just make everything kind of gradually under building, which is any, anybody, any contractor that comes in and tears that out that is worth a gun can make that out. Anybody knows how to shoot grate.
So it's the type of thing, I've got a board meeting Wednesday night. I can tell those ladies that, you know, when the weather gets nice enough for you to get, I mean, I know you want to stay out there in sun zero and shoot stuff in there. Um, soon as we can verify that that's okay.
As soon as I have some nice days, I've got some other jetting that needs done anyways, so it, the jet needs to come out of the building. And as soon as we can have some days where I don't have to worry about it freezing up and busting something, I'm going to get on some tubes and stuff and I will, we'll get down here and get something down here and see what we.
And know where we are. Is city council okay with me kind of just tapping this resource for?
Yes.
Bid process, helping me draft that and kind of helping me make the right decisions along the way.
I'll advise you in the way I can.
Okay, that's all we need. All right. Thank you, Max.
Am I next?
Monthly bills.
Yeah.
Well, we're going back to monthly.
I'll make a motion to pay the monthly bills.
A second.
Come on, get in, sir. I gotta get my stuff in.
No, that's not an intention.
Yeah, that's, that's why I don't.
This is um, Charlie Bear totally. To get a bad knowledge.
And she might have some idea of some contractors and she might have.
I definitely surprise one, but I don't know if they.
With all the utilities, isn't that a good way to go though, Joe? All the utilities under there?
I don't know where our, I'd have to say where our utilities are.
I'm talking about any of my utilities because they're that many.
No, that, that looks good somewhere. Probably should do, you know, some of those calling out.
Yeah, we can see what things look like.
Have it out for everybody before.
It sounds like there's several utilities there.
Yeah. Okay, um. I've got, I've got Mike's report, Mike's report here. Waste water facility drowning at a daily average of eight gallons per day. Thirty-six percent of design flow for gallon treated this month. That little plant down there is, is great. It really does, it really does a great job.
State of the art.
All of his, all of his stuff is in very good shape. For the levels of testing stuff, so. He hasn't had really any issues. This month we had a water leak down there and had a line bust. It busted and we re fixed it, re insulated it the best we could once we got the insulation dried out and obviously didn't get it dried out enough because it busted again and it's time to get that bolt. So that is probably part of our loss. Although I talked to Mark the other day and our, our loss percentage was up for the month. We were at a twenty-six, twenty-one percent water loss rate, which is not good. Across the ground down there, you know, the same thing is down here today. That was unmetered water and there wasn't anything we could do about it. So several meter bottoms cracking and leaking and a portion of that doesn't get through the meter, so. So hopefully next month, this month, we'll, we'll look a little better. We get out from the, yeah, get out of the fridge of temperatures for freezing things up. So that's Mike's report. Everything's going good. So that's Mike's report, everything's going good down there, he, uh, he ordered tires for his Jeep today. You just about have to imagine if there's dread on him, so I told him he's gonna get some tires ordered because they were shot.
Ecolite lights or whatever.
The UV light is, I don't know, he got started on that today, on this project this month and I, I will find out tomorrow, I have an answer for you. I know it needs to be done here really quick because, yeah, I think it's in, yeah, it has to start treating, it has to start UV again, so. So, yes. Went in and I've got a short list again this month, the weather did kind of hold us up. Uh, you see by the bills, we've got some painting, some cleaning at the barn down there, it looks better. Representable, if you come into the office now, I'll just.
It just seems empty when you come in, there's just stuff all over the walls.
I need to get some new maps printed, get some maps reprinted and get them hung back up. Uh, I had water classes the whole month of January, two days a week, and then took the test on February sixth. To get my DS two, but hopefully four weeks from now I will have a license to hang on the wall. I thank it, I felt pretty good about the tests, let's see. The twentieth of January, we resumed our tractor, um, so, done work with it, seems to be. So far it does everything we want. Trash truck repairs, two new cylinders on the, on the end gate, everything's good there, no leaks, everything went smooth on that. It does have a check, engine line came on at the end of last week, I'll make an appointment with Quincy Freightliner, have to have to take it over there. On a, on a non-trash day. And the, get a look at it, it's, yeah, you know, it's a gold warning, it should be at least. We've done some, a little bit, a little bit more brush cleanup, they actually done it while I was gone, class, some brush, burning, brush and brush. Ditch cleaning, we've done some culvert cleaning, dots in and.
I believe I moved my vehicle at that point.
She got scared, we had fire, we had a couple fires going down there, I think she wanted to move her vehicle. But, uh, that drain at the church right there had eighteen inches of cell to. I started digging and I didn't realize there was that much of a culvert there, by the time I was sitting down, I was knee deep, standing knee deep and it was road level and I started digging. So it, we cleaned, Main Street has been cleaned from Indian. Curve, curb to curb, Indian, dug out the culverts, everything's cleaned out. Todd went down and cleaned out everything around the corner there from C and R, shoveled all that out good, it looks like it'll drain again. And we went through and opened up a few other tubes, uh, like I was telling Lori, soon as the jet comes out, there's a lot of road tubes that, that are half full. So, I think we can start getting some water moving, just get it moving, we'll be in a lot better shape. We gotta, we gotta get the drainage fixed before we go throwing time money at roads, or we're just gonna eat our roads up again. Can't spend hundred, sixty thousand, hundred thousand dollars on roads and then lose it all to the rain, so. We're, we're trying to get some of that going, it's just, there are so many days right now that we can actually get out there. Um, Jason goes on the fifteenth, he goes on Thursday to retest for his CDL. He missed one part of the air bridge test, when he took his test, and if you, the air bridge test is the most important. One time, one time, he did not tell the lady that the beeper, the alarm would have. At sixty pounds, he told her alarm would go off, but he never said sixty, but he's gotta go back and retest for, for that. So he should do fine, I hope, if you really use a second CDL and Todd.
So who drove today then?
He drove some, I drove the morning, he had to go, he drove a few laps while I had to go with the water leak and that leak. We went back to, to it as a.
Notice who was driving.
So, he has his, you know, permanent stuff and everything. We all have two bids for trailers. Midstates Manufacturing. With the spare tire. And then we have Carter trailers for thirty, forty-three hundred and sixty dollars.
Is it the same trailer?
They are the same trailer, from spec to spec, uh, everything looks the same to me. So.
This is maybe a dumb question, but the tires are usually not worth a darn on the tires or on the trailers, right?
These have pretty decent, these will have the fourteen thousand axle, so they'll have the heavy tires underneath.
They will, it'll be better.
New tires, you mean?
Mm-hmm.
Well, there'd be new tires on your trailer. When we bought ours, the tires weren't real good quality and they didn't last even the summer. These should be better?
Yes.
Okay, I say otherwise, try to.
Then the heavy trailer, it'll have the good tires, to get heavy tires, I don't think.
Is that delivered or is this?
No, we'll have to go get either one of them, we'll have to go and get either one of them. So, either one looks like it'll do everything we need it to do. I have one other. Martin's Trailer Sales over there also.
So we're talking twenty-five hundred, twenty-five dollars difference.
Is it worth that trip, right? Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
And we're.
Part of my magic.
The, I talked to Peggy when she was here and, uh, I think we had forty-two, some forty-two. And it's all we had in it when we done the budget, but she said that was not an issue, the extra. Fifty dollars or whatever, a hundred fifty, was not an issue, she said.
Whatever you all gonna use this for, just for the.
Hauls pit butter and then anything else.
Tractor.
It will haul the tractor, yeah, it will haul the tractor. It would be enough trailers at home, haul anything we wanted to pretty much.
You can also use it for, for culverts instead of driving a little and biking the dump trucks like we've done in previous and beating around.
Yeah, it'll just, just be used for whatever we need it.
It'll get used in way one, what you guys are thinking of. Trash cleanup, trash cleanup and probably brush.
Yeah, you, whatever set is, set aside boards on, yeah, I'll have, I'll have state. Throw a set of boards together and.
Who wants to buy a trailer?
I'll make a motion to accept Carter trailer sales out of Kirk City, the price of forty-three hundred and sixty dollars. Joe, what about the old trailer we have down there now, though? I think it used to be an old recyclable trailer, is it shot?
Is it what?
Shot, is it?
Um, it's not shot, it's just not adequate, it's just not heavy enough.
No, I know it wasn't for that, I was just asking about it in general.
Oh, no, it's not shot.
They all recycle, yeah, yeah, I knew we got it, we got free. Were they free? We paid us some for it?
We bought it from Randy, Randy Dawson. Yes, Randy Dawson is what it says on.
We got grant funds to get it, I mean, the recycling trailer? Yeah, okay, I didn't know if there was any good left down there.
Yeah, it's been a long time since Randy Dawson's been.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, but no, it, well, you could, you could machine run it, no, I know that. I just don't.
We did once, it was not a pretty sight.
Oh, I'm sure not. It's wanting to squat on you.
Any other questions for Joe?
I have one more thing, yeah, the, the only other thing I have is, uh, the computer system for down at the barn. We had a laptop, Margaret had a laptop up here, took it down there and we got it to come on and to link up. And we were having troubles with, with it doing some stuff, so.
And hooked up the age of it.
Yeah, we called Chris with the computer, the IT guy, and he said, turn it over and tell me what year it is, and I told him and he goes, throw it in the trash can.
Belonged to Peggy a long time ago and then we had purchased it for John Bodie back when he was the economic development person. And then after he. That job, he gave it back to us and we put it on the shelf in case we ever needed it.
What year was it?
It was, uh, it was fourteen years old, thirteen or fourteen years old.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, nothing's jumped, so, he said it's, it's a good, it was a pretty good computer, but he said it's just done for.
Is that the one Mike had down there?
No, no, this is a laptop that the only person that used it was John Bodie, I mean, it belonged to Peggy to begin with.
Whatever, the computer down there.
It's outdated also.
Yeah, it was even older.
I just had my laptop down at Chris' and I thought it was fairly new and I kinda almost got the same.
Yeah.
But we did get mine going, but it, it doesn't take long before.
Yeah.
Mine wasn't that old, I swear.
So the quotes that he sent, if I'm making details of these, for another Zonit that. And I don't, I didn't make topics of all this for you guys, like I can, uh, and add. And I, I'm not a computer person, four gigs of.
Yeah, he said he knew that.
Yeah, it's not even English to me. But the total number, I guess, is all I can see is twelve hundred and seventy-five dollars for a complete new computer system. For down there.
Which is less than, yeah, fifteen or eighteen, maybe fifteen, well, anyway, fifteen or eighteen hundred. And for a, a desktop with the monitor and all that, you had the price for that too and it's. More than that.
Yeah, it's, uh. Eleven plus, it'd be sixteen, sixteen hundred dollars roughly. For a desktop with all, monitor, the tower, the keyboard, the, everything, so. And the, the laptop would be better for me, my preference, because I can fold it shut and slide it over the corner. You know, not have a big bulky computer setting on the desk all the time. So.
He's not bashal, is he?
I'll put, this is for the year and.
I know.
So you're saying we budgeted how much? But what I'm saying is, so, if he needs a little, like a program or something, you'll have a little more cash that he could get.
Yeah, I don't think there's any thing.
Don't know if they need it, but.
And the main thing was.
Very basic is all I need because I am very basic.
The main thing we're doing with Chris as opposed to going to Walmart or something, is that Chris will come and install and do and. And then he supports all of our systems here, so he'll. Come back and make sure. I mean, I'm just asking.
There's gonna be more.
No, I'm just asking, if we gotta do it, we might as well do it now.
Well, a printer. A printer would be handy for this, for the meetings I did.
Except you could run up here and.
But yeah, I could say something, someone will show me how to use it. Oh, yeah, I can just bring a laptop.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Because you have, within your paper and. Right.
They keep all that stuff up here, so. So just the, the system, I can, I can look up parts for our, you know, our plows or our machinery.
And you can do locates.
I can do my locates exactly, my locates, I can do my monthly reports.
Look at that thing for you.
Yeah, I can, just, I can just use it for a variety of small things. Here I can receive some of my quotes, some of my emails and stuff.
Yeah, I was gonna say emails, I'm, you know, constantly get things from D and R or whatever they want, your email, they can be able to. Be in direct contact with you.
Mike's got a laptop.
Mike has. He has a computer.
He has to have to do his members and things, his reports.
Yeah, cause yeah, he makes his own report, the, the report that I brought to you, as he makes that. Yeah, it's, it is actually saved on the computer, you just make it up, make your, make it out.
Change this and make a motion to get a computer laptop. I would second that.
That's all I have with me tonight, if you don't have anything, I'll do my best to answer any questions.
What's your threshold on piling snow and stuff?
I'd say an inch to inch and a half. These, these little light snows have been really hard on our equipment.
Yeah, I, I agree, I don't think.
I think we, I mean, we tried to stay on it, just, I didn't really know what you all expected, so I tried to just stay on it and. We've been hard on equipment these last couple snows, we've broke some cutting edges and broke a cylinder and. You find everything when there's only an inch of snow, so.
I, the only thing I would, would suggest would be more cinders on the corners and stuff.
Yeah, we can do that, I was just trying, I didn't know how far our.
Gets back down.
Yeah, I didn't know how far our pile would go, I'd never been, you know, never had to really deal with that management of that and. It's, they go, they go farther than I thought they would.
The thing I notice the most, I have trouble with stopping on the side street and trying to jump across the highway. And nobody's a-coming, but you're sitting there spinning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the time you get out the highway, here comes this car or that car.
Yeah.
And then you step up on it more and then you hit the highway.
Yeah.
It's amazing how well them cinders, they can even melt this stuff.
Today I jumped in the truck right quick and just went and spread some of the hills and some spots and it just, well, that block just absorbs the sun a little bit more. So, yeah, we can, we can go heavier with the cinders and.
Wouldn't have to go any heavier, just.
Just do some.
More often, yeah.
Just some. Unless you get a sweet muck on spring.
Yeah.
The more you put down, the more you gotta pick up.
Yeah, they're, you're doing, I mean, they're, they're being put on sick and.
Yeah, yeah, the hill going down to, down to the old maintenance here, what, Second Street, it's very covered now.
Yeah, it really was, I noticed.
Well, that's because there was a semi halfway up that hill.
Yeah.
He decided to pull out of the. I tried to go up.
How did he get CDL license?
He said he couldn't make the, he couldn't make the turn at the Hunter Building and, and he couldn't have, in his defense, but, but that's what he said, he was sitting there stuck and he goes, I. Could've turned around in the old farm, I don't realize that now.
He could've went south and hit the highway.
At the list.
He had to have drove straight off into the other parking lot, made the turn, and he didn't think about it until he was already in a situation, and by the time he spun out, he was in a pickle.
We've all been there.
Yeah, exactly, we got him out of there and he was very thankful, he thanked us for the help. I don't know the man's name.
I'll tell you.
So, he was, he was very thankful that we helped him and got him going again, so. But, yeah, we can, what do you, what do you all recommend on this stuff, I mean, inch and a half?
You didn't do any Sunday morning, did you?
Very little.
Yeah.
They come in, scratched around a little.
Little bit up on Main Street.
Sundays would need to, I told them, I was, I was gone Sunday morning, they came in and they worked, I told them, I said, you just need to go concentrate on around the churches a little bit. Around the square, just hit the high spots and then we.
Somebody made kind of a smart remark to me there. Seen it, wanna know if it isn't, if, if it had, had to smooth the current fellow up. I told them I didn't think it was enough one to make you push.
Yeah, it's hard on equipment.
It is hard on equipment.
You know, we can only afford to put so many cutting edges and, you know, we tear up a plow.
I didn't think it was that bad myself.
You know.
It's northeast Missouri, you're gonna have to be able to drive on just a little bit of snow.
But it's, it's hard to keep everybody happy.
Part of it.
Yep.
Five on Main Street, so.
Exactly, it'll be going, it'll be, it'll, most of it will probably be gone by tomorrow afternoon. Yeah, yeah, so, okay, well, thank you.
Mister Bishop was at home.
Okay. Yeah. The monthly report, Ryan wrote up, there's only one other thing that he left off here, we've got a. Vehicle theft slash forgery scam that happened here in town. Um, right now I've got the FBI and DDCC assisting me with that.
You're gone.
But, um.
If it's ongoing, then it's ongoing.
This is multiple drive up, where you could only steal their equipment, so, where people think they've paid and they haven't?
No, um.
Some of it, some of it.
They, uh, called the car builders on the machines to kinda stop the problem. I think more of it's just a, an employee issue, not asking, when somebody comes in.
Oh.
Yeah, it's definitely not deliberate, one out of ten times it's deliberate, yeah, so, but it's getting better.
God, I'll be honest, enough of telling you, heck, you.
Yeah.
I do.
Yeah.
All righty.
If there's any other questions, write them down, if I can ask Mister Bishop tomorrow or the next day, I'll call him on your behalf. And I'll get back with you. Let's move on, unfinished business, former country club building, it's still for rent, if anybody would like to rent it. We've had no, nobody contacted us.
We already.
The former country club.
No.
And regarding the lease agreement, everything is in the hands of, applications for the community, block, block, community demolition. Block grant, we're still taking applications. Um, more the merrier, please. Um.
How many do we have signed up by now?
Five, two.
Uh, no, we have two more, I think.
Seven?
Probably seven, yeah.
Call share agreement with Knox County Commission for Enhanced, nine one one, I've not got. Hmm, any prisoner along with the questions I had on it, we'll continue that, any other questions? With unfinished business. Okay, new business, and I have some, something in all of the comments, I will let everyone know. Um, new business, we used to, when they rented the lake property out here. It was a year to year lease with option renew. Mister Mallett is wanting to know if we would want to do that, we read our lease, it doesn't read that way, it's up to the board. If we need to re-bid it, we will, you wanna go ahead and grant it, can, can we?
Last, well, it expires, so we probably need to put the ad in the paper to take bids again. Last year, if you remember, we thought we might do something else out there.
We were hoping that we could get something done with the building in a more timely fashion. More resources in out there and we've not gotten any further on the building than what we have. We probably should re-bid it and go ahead with option renew again.
Uh, Mister Mallett said that, you know, if he was going to be doing it again and he wants fertilized.
Yes.
Uh.
And that's what, what the option renew, when I wanted to do it, that's why I wanted it, so that you could put fertilizer on it, it's broken down and. Benefit of it, more benefit of it. So, it's my recommendation that if we do go ahead, when we do go ahead and re-bid this, that we go ahead and do an option renew on both parties. But we can set a contingency, that we gotta know something, a certain date, either party. Like if we wanna take ten acres out and do something, we can. We'll just set that contingency up and.
We'll have to bid it probably the best.
Yeah.
We need to.
Put a notice in the paper.
Consensus in the board, we're working on.
Right.
Go ahead and re-bid for sure.
Basically with the two thousand and seventeen paying crop, it expired.
So do I have a recon census in the board, do we get it?
We get it, yeah.
Okay. Uh, upgraded on the park.
Well, I did some, I was looking around down there, we should have done the ice skating right this year, it would have been perfect.
Yeah, I would.
Do some more checking on that.
Was a good year.
Uh.
Go ahead.
But we've got four basketball goals down there, none of them are really good basketball goals. In my opinion, so. It's something that's an adjustable one, that's, no one can really tear up, I don't think, if they hang on or not, but.
But don't we have that commercial ones though?
That's the bid I got.
There is a guy in Memphis who's.
Does it?
Doggy Boy Enterprises.
Really?
Well. Since you take a lead on this, I'll give you a camera.
Well, before you go very far, Joe had mentioned to me, you know, Deb, after meeting that night and supper, that, um. She had told Joe she would take over working on the park and they had no summer in Kirkville that can sandblast all those.
All the old ones?
Mm-hmm, so that's just a.
The one that's, the ones we have out there, they're like a thousand dollars just for that, a new one. So, yeah, that, you know.
I just know, so we maybe should have asked him about that, but I know Deb mentioned that to me, cause she would like take over, like get some paint going and. And working on the park itself, she'd like take, her words were, my baby to take care of, she said. And Joe knows somebody that could do some sandblasting, so, checked with him first.
How much was Joe's?
Um.
This one's a, it's an adjustable one, anybody can adjust, it's like two thousand.
One's two thousand dollars for one of them, and we're talking.
But it's, you know, no, I was just thinking of getting one.
Oh, I'll say.
Maybe put it on the, I don't know, put it on the side or, cause that one on the north side is just a pole there, there's.
Right, we had to take it down, it was a bust a few years ago, yeah, do you wanna save the three?
Or we could do one on sometime, maybe a few years later, give us up on the other end.
We could just get a sandblast too, spend some money on that.
Yep, we'll check.
Just a thought.
Yeah, but hang on to it, you might check with Joe about it, like you know, she mentioned it to you.
Just like it'll be calling back.
All righty, in all of the comments, you, you had asked me to look into lights for the fire department. So, I did, and we had went over there and looked at them the other evening, it is pretty dim, as you probably know, anybody.
No, I don't.
Uh, they get, uh. I got a price on them, let's see here. Price of like thirteen hundred dollars, just lights and bulbs, and I have a feeling, I know for a fact our city crew can put them up. Which would save you, us all the later. That was for roughly every light we discussed about, which was like, rough, uh, it's been a while, like I said.
Thirteen hours?
Yeah, that gets us all the bulbs, that gets us reflective lenses, that gets us something, if we lose power, they'll kick on. They'll be, uh, like these here, only reflective lens. And they're, they'll work up to like twenty below, they'll kick on and get brighter, but that way if we do lose power in the city and we still have an emergency. That, you know, and it gets cold or we have fuel to go out or something, furnace is working, it will work. And they'll, will run off of like an amp and three quarters a piece, if we had to hook the generator up for an emergency situation for the city.
Now you mentioned the one on the outside already.
Off the top of my head, it's like a hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Sixty-five.
I'm sure we can find cheaper lights, I know you can do LED, LED is supposed to be just as good or better, but it's a different kind of light. I, uh. I'm still not sold on LED, I'm a percent, I've been on the church tower three times in the last six, seven years, I've replaced those three times, so. They are LED.
But these will not be.
These will not be, they'll be T five, they'll be fluorescent.
T five?
Yeah, and they will fire and light, like these here will not light, you know, when it's cold, those will light, like twenty degrees and low. So, that's food for thought for lighting, which is pretty atrocious down there for people trying to get in and get out, so. And we had looked at the tower, about maybe cleaning it up, had you made any further on that? Okay, I hadn't either.
No.
So.
Wouldn't tear it down or support it?
Yeah, it's right about that, I guess, I hadn't seen it.
Any other questions? That's as cheap as I can get the lights through the mod supplier, which they'll take care of you on your warranty on it, so. Do we have a motion to change the lights or do you wanna think on it some more?
My motion, no, no need to put it off, so what's the motion?
Don't go ahead and order the lights.
Order the lights.
And the city crew will put them up, take them in, at the firehouse.
And this is for the firehouse, and city guys will put them up.
Yeah.
And so, what's it cost then?
I lost my email, but it's approximately thirteen hundred to fifteen hundred, probably covered outside light.
So approximately thirteen.
To fifteen hundred.
To fifteen hundred dollars.
That, that gets you five or six bulbs in each fixture, reflective lens and four foot strips. It will put out an immense amount of light.
And so, this is for lighting inside?
Inside and.
And out, okay.
One outside.
Inside and one out.
Outside, that'd be just kinda like what they put up on the pole signs, or up on the pole lights.
Then, you're talking fourteen, sixty-five and tax, you're talking, everybody applies fifteen hundred.
They don't tax.
Oh, we don't tax you, that's right, we write fifteen hundred. So probably fifteen hundred dollars.
Probably, I will get in touch with everybody before we order anything, for sure, I'll give everybody hard numbers for the next day or something. So.
Okay, so, don't we make the motion then?
Ryan seconds.
Ryan's second.
All in favor? I'll see what I have, everybody. Any other all in the comments?
Was looking around the old water plant. If they're wanting, needing some winter stuff to do, trim some of those trees that have overgrown them.
Okay.
And along the road, I think the county did.
The county?
Up to their, up to the city line, up to, on the, the ballpark road that's going north of that town. There's some overgrown trees in that ditch and stuff there on the west side of the road.
I had read something in the paper about someone wanting a slow sign for children down by the park or the park. Isn't there a sign there anyway, when Jennifer Clucky had?
They took it out.
Huh?
It's not there anymore.
Where'd it go?
I don't know, maybe they took it out after she quit her business.
Yeah, it's empty.
There used to be a sign there.
Yeah.
It's bad right there, I mean, I used to live where this lady lives and people tear through there.
Come out by your house?
By my old house, the yellow, over by the ballpark.
Yeah, down the ballpark.
I'll do some sitting there on the weekends.
What's crazy is the last time I drove through, I like, there were a lot of kids there now.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just go sit down there for random for a few, few nights. And also tickets is always, is always a good deterrent to get people to slow down.
I haven't thought about like hiding in the bush with the, making videos.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just go down there.
You know, just hiding. Huh? Just shaming people into, you know what I mean, going, not driving like getting it through there.
Down at the barn, if there's a sign down there, it was taken down or something.
Oh, right.
Cause we had.
Cause there used to be one, yeah, cause you're going.
Jennifer requested it.
Kids that would be.
I remember when Jennifer had it put in, but I drive that road all the time and I haven't seen it and.
It may have got moved over here.
Why, coming up in town?
Yes, there was, closer to the old sewer plant, old water plant, yeah.
Not there anymore?
She says no, but I thought there was, I haven't checked.
I could have just be missing it, but I don't remember seeing it for a long time.
Okay.
That might have, might have took it down.
It might be down at the barn or somewhere, put somewhere else.
You haven't checked it.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? Any other comments? Who would like to go home? We do have a, a ready, and.
Oh, I did give them a copy of that, so they should be well informed.
Yeah, I don't know the letter.
Yeah.
I, I think that would be great if he could do that, the problem is, I don't know if that is up to us. It's up to the property owner and property estate, so. However, we can go ahead and let him try to contact her and see if he wants to help with cleaning it up. We can go ahead and contact the bird. I will work on trying to get that pulled off. Perhaps maybe even take ownership of it, make it more. Okay. Who would like to adjourn? Does that have a motion?
Like, John? I think we did that last time.
Number seconds, all in favor? Everybody? We are adjourned. Close to bed, son. Oh, you're not bed.
I don't know how to turn this livestream on. There's no like stop.